Trying to plan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in the name of our republic, which stands one nation, and we have individual liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Brandon, what do you have for us or Kyle?
All right, I'll let Kyle do all the talking as he spearheaded this and has got this wonderful opportunity for us.
Okay. All right, so I've been working with the, uh, working on some grants for the EMS department. Uh, these three grants that I've been working on, they come through the Department of Homeland Security. This last year, the state implemented a EMS division and they've had more funding to be able to give to EMS agencies directly because they used to be combined with the fire and the EMS and now they're, they're a separate branch. So when we get these grants, you usually only have like a week or two to be able to apply for them. So, um, we applied to send, um, three of our EMTs to paramedic school. Um, we got approved for that grant of thirty thousand dollars. Um, what this does for us is it really increases our standard of care to the community and allows us to be able to provide that higher level of care. Um, we have three years to use this. This is a reimbursement grant, so as they graduate, um, the state will reimburse up to ten thousand dollars for each student. A normal paramedic course is about eight thousand dollars, um, for everything. So it should, uh, be able to pay for them to go to school and something we can offer to them at no cost. But we, out of that, we need to be able to get something out of them and we'll work with Kevin to get some type of, um, agreement written up. But if they take the course, then Plasguy County will have them for a certain amount of time. So, um...
This is reimbursement, that we have to pay the full thirty thousand upfront or just as they take the course?
Just as they take the course. So, and so if we don't have anybody take it, we're out of nothing. If we have somebody take a course in the beginning, then we will have to front, upfront, and then we'll be reimbursed once they pass and have their license.
And that, that's a budget line item that I do have.
Okay, we come out of your budget.
So. Um, the second grant that we applied for was...
I have a question on the line item.
So if you send someone to this paramedic school and they don't complete it, then the cost is after the cost of the county, correct?
No, we will go up, that, that person will be responsible for it and we'll work with Kevin to get all them...
That person is responsible for it?
Yes, that person will be responsible. Yes.
So the only time that the grant kicks in is if they complete the course and then you apply to get reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the second grant we applied for is an artificial intelligence mannequin and virtual reality. So these artificial intelligence mannequins, these are state of the art. Um, there's very few in the state currently. Um, these, these mannequins can hear, they can see, um, they breathe, they bleed, they sweat. Um, as they do this, you ask, you, you program it in what you're working with and as you talk to these mannequins, they respond back to you as an actual patient. And they give, and they go right off of the artificial intelligence that's built into the, basically the internet. And if you're having chest pain, they're going, and you treat them a certain way, they're going to go down that path. If you treat them the wrong way, they're going to go down a different path. So it allows us to be able to train our, our new employees, um, our new students and everybody to a much higher level of care. Um, this, this is really big for our training institute as we're getting ready to start kicking off some more classes, um, for EMT and, um, and then having paramedic students and then internal education. Um, the virtual reality allows us to do scenarios that we can't normally do. Um, when you think of OB emergencies, it's not something you could simulate very well, but when you have, when you have the virtual reality and you can put yourself in a virtual atmosphere, it allows you to be able to do that. Um, that grant was for thirty-four thousand, three hundred and two ninety-three and that buys us the mannequin and two virtual reality headsets. Um, that was another one that, uh, is fully rem, it's fully reimbursed by the state. Um, we have to use the funding by September twenty-four for that one.
This year.
This year.
So does this, uh, mannequin bleeds and everything, is it need regenerated somehow?
It's all done with basically water and saline that we have that expires off of our truck.
Right.
So, but we can do, we can do the airways in it, we can do IVs, you can pretty much do anything you can imagine with these, so.
So thanks again, this is a re virtual thing?
It's already, this one is, we just have to, we, we purchase, we purchase it and then they reimburse us, send them the receipt.
There, there's no county share.
So you purchase it and, and the money is owed, but we don't pay it. You said now you could fill and they pay it? I'm lost.
We have, we have the paperwork on it. It's... I would assume that we would have to purchase it first and then they would reimburse.
So if it does, it won't take county money to pay for it before the county gets reimbursed for the money spent?
Yes. So if, if both of these are approved tonight, the paramedic one, we don't have to ask for an additional, uh, but for this mannequin, we will plan on being on the agenda next Monday to ask for an additional, get that purchased.
So you're planning on doing an additional through your fund to pay for these things before you get reimbursed?
Yes.
Then we have a third one.
Yeah, the third one that, um, I've been working on, um, countywide was a grant for, uh, to implement our mobile integrated health grant, grant in the community. Um, what this allows us to do is allows us to be able to go off our services to the county in non-emergency settings. Um, you have a patient that, um, just needs their blood pressure checked or something like that, allows us to go into their home or discharge from the hospital, uh, work with Leanne on the substance abuse portion of it. Um, we worked on, we worked really hard on this grant, Leanne helped me. Um, this grant was for a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars and it was, it was basically getting us started to be able to do that. Um, we did get denied this grant and I would recommend if you guys as county leaders can help us with this to reach out to our state legislation. Um, there's state legislation in this, in this grant specifically that county agencies were denied. Um, and the reason, and the reason being is it went to, all the funding went to city, towns and townships. In this legislation, they forgot to put county in it. And unfortunately, that took us out of this one that we likely would have been able to receive as well. So I've reached out to Kendall Culp, um, in an effort to hopefully get this changed. And if you guys have any connections, that would greatly appreciated. Is it's because the, a lot of the larger cities, City of Carmel, I believe, the City of Westville, they all received this grant and the rural communities really suffered that are county, county agencies, so, um, we're hoping for change in the future to be able to, be able to get this type of grant. Um, but we are gonna, we are gonna continue pushing forward with our, with our mobile integrated health and we'll be back to share more of that with you guys. On how to do it at very little cost to the county.
So grant number three here is kind of on hold until we get some legislation changed, correct?
Yeah, that was just information.
Yeah, that was just more information of why, why we did not get that one. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon here. I think he need, has some questions about, you know, as we continue to get more paramedics that apply and train where we want to go.
I guess before I get into that, do you want to go ahead and do an approval vote on those grants before we move forward?
Yeah, well, I do have a, excuse me, a, a question on the AI. Uh, how important do you think that is to, for someone training with AI is compared to the way you've trained before, prior to that, with, with the mannequin that did not have the AI capability?
I, I think it's, I think it's next generation, ne- next generation learning.
Okay.
Um, because it, because that, that artificial intelligence is going to be able to put them in scenarios that we can't, we can't mock.
Okay.
A, as a, as a human. Um, like, you know, you, when you can't, when you try and walk in and take care of a mannequin that doesn't, that doesn't have any lung sounds or anything and you're trying to create them, it makes it really, really hard as this, you know, I walk in and my mannequin's wheezing, I know that they're having an asthma attack, you know, or something along them lines. So I think it, I, it's, it's, it's honestly state of the art. Like, it's goo, it's huge for the EMS system and, and the ability to continue to educate and grow.
So there would be very few surprises that a new, newly trained EMT would go into with training with AI because they would have seen most of that. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Really, really good.
Have any other questions for Kyle, Brandon? Their request to approve grant one and two?
Uh, I would, excuse me, I would make a motion to approve grant number one and grant number two.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, uh, any other discussion? I'd, I'd just ask if you keep Laura informed as far as, uh, money trail and so on, what needs to be done your side, her side to make it smooth? Then you plan on presenting this to, uh, the joint session or just the council next week?
Uh, just, I...
Just the council?
I put it in for the agenda next week.
You hear the comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose.
Okay, and then just the last thing with this, uh, grant, send people to paramedic school. I know we have one that's on the fence about it. Um, however, we're gonna be fully staffed for paramedics here at the beginning of May, hopefully. Now with that said, typically, we only have so many medics and then the rest are EMTs. And I wanted to know what you thought about if the opportunity to go medic-heavy and have some of these people continue to step up, if that was gonna be an issue. It would incur, for each additional paramedic that replaces an EMT, that'd be about an extra twenty thousand a year in salary.
I do not see any problem with being, uh, paramedic-heavy.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, it's a great problem to have.
No, nobody else around us really has that problem.
Yeah, we have a lot of talent available. I think it's a, a wonderful problem to have.
Okay.
Not too long ago, we were talking about only having one medic in the county at that time.
We were.
Yes.
And there, there are counties around us that are still in that situation right now. So I feel like we're, we're pretty lucky. I think we've got a good service going on, we've got good leadership in place and we've got a lot of good employees as well. And we're all working together very well.
Yeah. Wonderful problem to have.
Yep. All right, well, that's all we had.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. No more questions, thank you.
I guess I did have one question, sorry. The connection on making this, uh, contractually, working with Kevin on this reimbursement, paying these people what they do not finish class and so on. And how many years you have in mind of trying to keep this person once this grant paid for their education?
I think the, the going timeframe with other agencies has been about two years. We could make that however we want. I know, probably the easiest, easiest thing to look at it is being a loan to that employee. Um, and every, every monthly payment is quote forgiven. So if it's a two-year contract, once they've worked two years, it's considered paid off. If they leave after that first year, then they would owe fifty percent of the balance of that, is the way I kind of looked at it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't see any need of changing that because, uh, after a few years, um, we would prefer they work here by choice rather than contractually. And so, yeah, I think it's, sounds good to me to leave the way it is.
Okay.
You might want to share that with the council when you present. We, that's important.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Brandon, thanks Kyle.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, down to other business, we have the approval and signing of claims and payroll six and seven.
Okay, I have, uh, reviewed payroll six and seven and I would make a motion to approve those as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion, claims or payroll? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the minutes of our March eighteenth meeting that were sent to us.
Hey, I've reviewed those minutes and I would make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the, uh, quick claim deeds, property over the Monterey area. I think we had thirty different, uh, sections of property. I think we're on the share sale at one time. Asking these to be sold. I think we said fifty dollars a plot, so we have the paperwork here to have this deed signed. I think, Kevin, did you prepare these?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Has all the plots listed there for us? Our action here is I hereby accept the offer from the proved purchaser, one thousand five hundred dollars for purchase of drive real estate. So as is property. We need a motion to approve the sale of this property. We'll be signing a quick claim deed and purchase rate.
So I, I would make a motion to approve the purchase or the sale of this property.
I'll second it.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose. That cut down the sales, pair sale.
Trying to sell those quite a while. Finally got some interest.
Okay, our next, uh, point of business is a resolution, uh, designating the extension of the county clerk's operation. Mainly has to do with, uh, the courthouse being under construction and having to move the clerk's office. Now it's time for voting and, uh, that nature, so that little history of the reason why, I'll just read the proclamation or the therefore statement. Being so resolved and certified by the Plasguy County Board of Commissioners and the Plasguy County Election Board designated that the Plasguy County Highway Garage located at eleven thirty-one North, US thirty-five Winamack constitutes the annex of the Plasguy County Clerk's Office. We would need to approve this resolution.
Hey, I would make a motion to move forward with that, uh, resolution.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Conference requests, Health Department, Solenda, to attend the spring IVRA conference. On four nineteen is at Fisher's on four one six through by three, ask... Motion to approve.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve Solenda's conference request on all three of those dates.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, approval of the conference, any other discussion? Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then wait was our attention, I guess, the auditor's office, about a vehicle. Really aware of some of the background here. Nineteen ninety-eight Ford F eight hundred, owned or given to Fulton County, EMA. Request made to the auditor's office title. Okay, this, I assume that it's still property of the county.
Right here. All right, that's a copy of it.
What they do, they lend it to them?
Well, it depends on whose story you were here. It was either meant or given, but we retained the title. And so they called in the last couple of weeks and said we'd like to have the title for that vehicle and we said, no. And they said, you want the, you want it back? And I said, well, I don't know, I guess that's a commissioner's decision.
Yeah, I'd say it is.
I would.
I don't know what motion was made back then or what con, now that they have a contract, they don't have the title, so I don't know.
Made that right, Kevin, it'd been a motion.
I could go back and research the minutes from nineteen ninety-eight, they're available, we got them. And it's up to you what you want me to do.
Discussion?
Did you say nineteen ninety-eight?
Yeah, pardon me? Yeah.
That's, you know, that's not, that's a tandem axle truck. Isn't it, Dave? Close to a tandem axle truck? You owe.
Me?
Yeah.
Nope. Fuck, sad problem.
Or a fall.
Yeah, that's a picture.
Isn't that a tandem axle truck?
It could be, it could be a single axle.
Eight hundred.
It could have been one of the military vehicles that they acquired under a couple of EMA directors ago.
Oh, I thought everyone should get it before you just give them the title.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you make a motion in recent?
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this because we need to investigate it and make sure that we don't get into a problem.
I'll second, I'll second that.
I don't think we have titles to those military vehicles.
Someone would.
Some of them might do.
Yeah.
If I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Second.
All right, second. I think you were in further discussion.
Yeah.
It just was seconded for EMA. They only had forty-six thousand miles on it and they gave it away.
Uh, to Larry Hoover, I mean, he went to Mark County to their county, right?
Yeah. We'll investigate it, make sure it's okay to do that.
Uh, I could try and make some inquiries if you want, Nathan, too, or someone to see what happens.
I think, I think you'd be, this is well pressed.
If one was duly, yeah, it might have just been, it served, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Can I have a copy of the title?
Sure.
To, uh... Table this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, motion carries, table that. Then another, uh, situation I'd like to discuss is internal controls. We're dealing with, uh, credit cards. We haven't had a lot of purchases. Did talk to both the courts and they have an internal control as well as, uh, most of those come from grants, grants are audited and so on. I think we need the same thing for just countywide. Uh, right now, we don't have any internal control over it and we're with Kevin, I'll bring up with something to add to the policy manual that talks about, you know, cash equivalent purchases. Didn't say credit cards. I said gift, I didn't mean to say gift cards.
That's what I was thinking, you ran my mind.
And, uh, so we have some control as to what they're being used for and how many are issued before they are, are purchased, so. You guys have any other feelings on that?
I think maybe our internal control would be a little bit weakened this time.
Countywide.
You give out gift cards. That's what grandmothers did.
We have had different departments.
Give out gift cards.
It doesn't happen a lot. I think it does, and I don't know if it honors, but it, it's okay, there's now a sponsor, but the gift cards, do they go to, for what reason? Say, I don't know. Commissioners approved it.
Would it have to pay income tax on the gift card?
No.
That depends because if the people that are receiving the gift cards are...
Thank you, Kyle.
And on our laws getting paid, then the gift card should be included in the payment. That's, that's another reason why we should track this because of the federal laws and state laws.
So just a food for thought, we'll bring it back, agenda, have to talk with Kevin how to approach it.
You have any comments?
Sure, uh, so Family Treatment Court through the state grant gives, gives cards as incentives. And so who gets those cards is confidential, we can't give you those names. Um, we keep track of it, we have some other things we deal with, with, um, the auditor's office that are confidential and my office keeps records, um, for example, some of the treatments that Port County does, um, through some of our programs. Um, we can't give you the juvenile's names who are involved in that, but we keep track of it also. Those gift cards that we give out are tracked quarterly by the state of Indiana and we have to, we have controls that they require that we do and then they double check that, um, quarterly and every year. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of controls on that.
Yeah.
So Mary, if the state court, the council comes in and honest the county and they said, okay, we see that the court is doing this and this and those. Can we see the documentation on this? Are we allowed to see it?
I don't know that they're allowed to see it, but they certainly can talk to, um, the Office of Court Services who controls all of that and audits that themselves every year. Um, and we certainly could give them information about who got them, but it would be somewhat anonymized so that we would not be handing out names. Right? So like the Port County Juvenile that we do where we pay Port County, or, and pay, um, mentors, we don't send the names to you because all of that gets scanned in and is, is public record done. And so juveniles' names are confidential and people who are participating in Family Treatment Court and, and those kind of things can be confidential. And so I don't, I've never been asked to try and work something out with you about how to do that, but I know that, um, Mr. Mellon was kind enough to send me an email and ask about it and so I sent him back all that information about the fact that their, their grant funds and that they're given out and we have to keep track of them in two different ways in my office. And then, um, any gift cards that are not given out are locked twice with keys that take two people to get into. So we're, we're pretty, and they're in my locked office. Double locked office, but, so they're, they're kept very secure, but we have to keep track of them. I'm not sure how the State Board of Accounts would want us to keep track of those and comply with confidentiality requirements. Okay. And we worked out the others, so I'm sure we can find a way to work it out as well, so...
Well, I think it's a wonderful program to give, just gift cards away to graduates and I also feel that chances of them getting a W-two to the same person are possible. chances of them getting a W-two to the same person are possibly not needed. So, as far as the county, so I, I like what you're doing.
Yeah, I'll be glad to work with the auditor's office and commissioners any way they'd like so that we can keep track of that, so. Not trying to make it harder, just
Absolutely.
waving a confidentiality flag so everybody knows that we have to be careful about what we give out and what we don't.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Input on that, uh Judge Walker.
And just comments, Laura and I did have our monthly meeting with the Rowing Corporation. Part of our contract, uh, I think it's very, very beneficial. Um, said it's, the contract is up to us to uh to hold them accountable. We have approached the meeting in that way and they were sent out, emailed all departments, what problems are you having with that, with the two individuals? Look at the next steps and uh what's not working right now? Getting ready for the election. Election of taxes and so on, uh, are those very beneficial? Then one other thing, just as a reminder, we'll be opening bids for the courthouse. Special station, or has prepared this announcement, public notice for that. It'll be at five-thirty standard time on the eighth, on the April eighth, thirty minutes prior to our joint, our joint session. So, well, it'll be uh publicized. Anything from the uh other board members? Kevin, do you have anything?
I do not.
Laura? Community comments? No?
I'll just mention that in addition to bid opening and the solar eclipse next Monday, uh, somebody from Congressman Rudy Lachlan's field office will be doing office hours out in my building from nine to ten in the morning.
Might you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes I receive complaints in my office and one of the complaints was that after last meeting, there was considerable concern about the leftover office, whatever that we had for sale. And I just wanted you to make it public knowledge of what exactly is being sold, not, not itemized, but I think the concern was um antique things coming out of the courthouse. And I'm pretty sure there's nothing
Yeah.
like that in your group of stuff that you ask to sell.
Correct, um, anything that is antique and still usable is waiting in line for refinishing as part of the project. Um, what we've accumulated is, I guess the closest thing to antiqu or vintage is some of the chairs that had been used in the circuit court for the jury box, that sort of thing, that are no longer in use for the county. It's random office chairs that have been abandoned and piled up in back rooms. One or two desks, mostly odds and ends, three or four stacks of M and M colored plastic chair, stackable chairs that have probably been in the east annex since nineteen eighty-seven without use. Don't know, anything that is of even potential historic value that can be repurposed is in line. And even some of those chairs, we, the, the older ones that are still in good condition might not actually end up going for sale and we might try to put in vaults so that we don't need to buy new furniture for the rooms where the public won't see. Problem, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I did invite the two people that were questioning this, step into the other area to see the pile of stuffs there, and I said, most of this is coming out of storage in a basement that's been there for quite some time, so. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to, oh. Second.
Uh, motion seconded.
Adjourn.